September 11, 2018, meeting of the Oshkosh Common Council. Would you please, would you please do the roll call?
Crowsey.
Here.
Peck.
Here.
Herman.
Here.
Allison Osby.
Here.
Palmary.
Here.
Ugraror.
Here.
Cummings.
Here.
Present seven.
Would you all please rise while Councilmember Crowsey leads us in the invocation. But first I'd like to ask, we do a moment of silence in remembrance of the events seventeen
Thank you. As we gather tonight, we are grateful for the good things that have come to the city. May our decisions always be ones that are for the well-being of all whom we govern.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I have a certificate for the three Gilbert children, two boys and a sister, all from Merrill. So if you turn and can look over in that corner. Your mom wants to take some pictures, please go ahead. I'll start with your big sister, your name, where you go to school, and your favorite subject for the second week of school.
My name is Ally and I go to Merrill Middle and my favorite subject is art class.
Which of you is Andy? Andy?
I go to Merrill, my favorite subject is gym.
Okay, great answer. Andy, this is for you participating in the pledge of allegiance, and you must be...
Augie.
And where do you go to school?
At Merrill.
And what is your favorite subject?
Gym.
Okay. The boys like gym. Now you can stay and watch the council meeting or go home and enjoy this beautiful summer evening. So, thank you. Thank you. First on the agenda this evening is a presentation on the analysis of the housing stock in the city of Oshkosh. And Mr. Davis, would you like to lead us off?
Yes, thank you. I'm going to be talking about one of the city manager's goals for this year, and this is just the first phase of two parts that we're talking about housing. The first phase here is the, what we have for existing housing stock and what our strategies and programs have been to address that. And then Mr. Birch will talk a little bit about what we're planning for future development when it comes to residential development in and around the city. So you should also have a handout tonight that included matrix, that included some information on some programs and some maps. And we have copies of the maps, and I'm supposed to be able to get these up on the screen, so I'll walk people through that as we get to it here. I'm told, I'll follow what I tell everybody, keep it to ten minutes, and I'll try to keep going as quickly as possible, but of course, if you have any questions, please interrupt me or Darren when you have anything. Number one, I'm going to actually go over there and talk about our map that we created for State of the City. That was our existing housing stock ma- map. It's kind of a inventory, a report card for each block in the city, and I'm going to go over there and kind of explain what's going on with that map. Can you hear me okay? Okay. We took some criteria that the GIS people and our planners could put together from census, from assessor information and some other sources, and we've used that for the quality of life analysis. And basically, it totals up to rate every block in the city on a number of criteria, and we've used this at State of the City. I've shown this to Rental Housing Advisory Board and other people involved in the planning for housing redevelopment. You can see that most of the area in orange and red is on the near north side and a little bit on the south side. It's as scientific as we can get when it comes down to block-by-block needs of housing stock. In general, it's south of Murdoch, east of Sawyer, and north of 20th. That's where you're going to find most of our housing needs, and we've identified those needs with that particular map. As time will go by, we'll update that, but that gives you an idea where we think, based on code enforcement, police calls, assessor records, things of that nature, where our housing stock is in the greatest need. And I think most people would agree, here at the railroad tracks in the River East neighborhood, around Main Street, Middle Village, going over to the university, that's where some of our greatest needs are for housing stock revitalization. And then on the next, on the first matrix is actually what we do when it comes to revitalizing or clearing some of the blight that we have in the city and redeveloping that. I wanted to highlight some things in that matrix. There's four techniques that we've identified, block-wide acquisition, demolition, and self-redevelopment. There's the miniature version of that where we do a block face or a small block. There's also scattered site where we acquire parcels in the city typically in that area south of Murdoch, east of Sawyer, and north of 20th to acquire, demolish, and rebuild. And then we have a new program called Rock the Block, which is something that we're working with Habitat for Humanity and Go H&amp;I on. That would be a new program in the city that, in general terms, identifies a neighborhood where they would come in with Habitat and volunteers and fundraising and spruce up, clean up a lot of properties. It would also rehabilitate some properties, and we're looking to actually acquire and/or rehabilitate some properties in that same neighborhood at the same time. So that would be a new program that we're just trying to start. Those are the four basic areas that I think we were looking at. There's a bunch of criteria then that we've identified, including costs and benefits. The number one cost when it comes to a block-wide acquisition, demolition, and resale is relocation, because a lot of the properties that we've identified either have owners or tenants in them. You'd have to acquire the property at the full market value. You'd have to pay relocation costs, and when you have renters, it's typically more than the owner occupied actually, because you have to, each renter is treated as its own family unit, so that could actually be more than relocating just one family. And then, assuming you can site prep that, you're spending over $5 million, we've estimated, for the typical block in central city Oshkosh. And we're not assuming we're condemning for anything. These are all sales that are basically at fair market value. If we cleared that and could see new construction somewhere in the $125,000 to $150,000 range, we'd get about $3 million in benefits. So unfortunately, the costs are still greater than the benefits, so the benefit-cost ratio would be less than one. We wouldn't get the full impact of our money out of the project, based on, really, the relocation is what really drives that number below one. The relocation is the big problem with that. The other techniques we've used in the city is, there at the South Shore, there's a block that we're slowly acquiring. We usually get those properties from willing owners that are vacant. We don't relocate anybody, and we typically buy it not at full market value, but somewhere around 50 cents on the dollar. Unfortunately, that takes a lot of time, but as you can see, the costs are a lot less, and the value's about the same when it comes out to the benefits, so that's actually the benefits exceed the costs. But you have to be very patient to do something like that, and you have to identify the owners when they're, when, on their schedule rather than on the city's schedule. And then there's the scattered site development, which is, the RDA is getting more and more involved with over the last year or so. That's when we have blighted properties that do have willing sellers that are vacant, so there's no relocation again. We typically buy that at 50 cents or even less on the dollar for the values, and we can provide those to a property owner, either a neighbor for redevelopment, or we could work with our Go H&amp;I or Housing Authority people or Habitat for Other Houses, and we do have those for sale if any other private developers would want to develop on those lots. And most of those projects, while they're scattered sites, most of them are in that orange and red area on the map, which is south of Murdoch, east of Sawyer, and north of 20th. And then last but not least, the Rock the Block, that's the new one. We're looking at doing at least one project for each Rock the Block type project, but the nice thing about that is that we'll also leverage additional funds from Habitat, Go H&amp;I, donations and volunteers, the community foundation. So I can see that having a benefit-cost ratio exceeding two as well, so that could be a nice bang for the buck for the city. Something else that, another impact is that anecdotally, once the Rock the Block activities occur, we've, crime goes down in those areas, at least when it's been measured, and the plus is that it affects not just one parcel, but many parcels in a neighborhood. So that's why I'm cautiously optimistic about the Rock the Block style type of event. And with that, I'll stop and see if there's any questions about those types of programs that we are currently operating.
These were some of the goal, these were some of the examples that were used in the goal, so the, Mr. Davis referred to programs we're doing. We are not doing a...
Oh, a block. No, an entire block.
Just to, just to clarify, but obviously, that one, running the numbers on that, the relocation is really what...
The relocation is what kills a project like that.
And so that benefit-to-cost ratio, which is the last column on the benefit side, we felt that was a good measure for you to look at in terms of where it is. Obviously, the ones that are, have a higher benefit-cost ratio don't have, they're not as impactful because they're done on a smaller level, but we can target some areas, and there's some advantages to that as well. So I think these covered generally the, the basic areas the council was looking for.
Ellen, I believe Rock the Block is planned for next year, 2019?
Yes, they were originally hoping to do one this fall, but they got such a late start on it and some staff change that they just didn't have a chance to get it done this fall, so next spring is when they plan on doing that, starting it.
Deputy Mayor Palmary.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm just looking through the handouts and the reference here. So we have inventory and analysis of the housing stock. Is that supposed to be in this, or was that supposed to be in our package?
The, the matrix is just the beginning. The map is more of the inventory at this point. We could give you all the data for that, but I think it boils it down very well for the map to show where our housing needs are greatest. If you want more, the quantities for all that, I can prepare that and provide that to the council.
And we also have some other maps we're going to be showing you in the next part of the presentation.
So that map isn't in here either?
No, that one was too big for us to make a copy of, unfortunately.
Yeah, so I think we need one or the other, just as a side note.
We'll get you the map, and we'll post that on the city website as well as part of this presentation. This is only the first half of this inventory and analysis, if you recall. We still have a lot of work to do before the end of the year, but I was told you wanted to see as much as possible, as much information as soon as possible. So we're partway through, and this is what we have at this point.
So I'm assuming the data from that will also be included in the comprehensive plan section of the housing assessment?
No, we did not include that, that I remember. That was something that we, in the, the comprehensive plan, use census, and that uses some census, but it uses a lot more city-created data based on the different departments.
That's correct. That's not just housing data, there's other factors that went into, went into that map that wasn't in the housing.
But it would make sense for us to include that data in that, would it not?
I think we can, we can adopt these by reference. You know, the comprehensive plan can make, acknowledge of that. Normally, the comprehensive plans have census data...
Specific requirements for housing inventory.
Yeah.
This is something that's kind of cutting-edge, that's not in the typical comprehensive plan, but I see your point that if we have the data available, why wouldn't we include it just as a benchmark for the comprehensive plan?
Ellen, why don't you go on with some of the other policy matrix options that are, weren't specifically listed by council, but things that we're currently doing, programs we have, and identify those.
For the most part, the housing programs are divided into two pieces. One is Healthy Neighborhoods, and the other is Block Grant, CDBG. I highlighted some at the very top, that would be the Healthy Neighborhoods funding for rehabilitation. We do have some money for rental-to-owner-occupied conversions, again, and we also have CDBG rehabilitation. If you're looking at doing a project where you can acquire and demolish and build a new house, we really don't have that money identified in any of these programs. It's really hard to build something new under the existing rules. They all have income or housing affordability limits, but there are ways to get that done, and that's, I'll highlight that on the city-funded rehabilitation borrowing. That's something we've learned from other communities in the state. Green Bay is the closest example of that, where they actually borrow funds from the state trust fund, and then they acquire, demolish, and then give those lots out to people who will build a new house on those properties. That's really difficult to do with the state and the federal rules that we have right now for Healthy Neighborhoods and CDBG funding. That doesn't mean we won't, we're still continuing to do all these Healthy Neighborhoods and CDBG projects, and they're typically concentrated, again, north of 20th, south of Murdoch, and east of Sawyer, because that's where our greatest housing needs are based on even census information. So that's been identified for many years as to where we should spend that money.
Deputy Mayor Palmary.
Thanks, Mayor. So, Mr. Davis, so what we're looking at, the housing program policy matrix, those are the existing programs, and I guess my question is, do we have somewhere else some kind of performance or utilization numbers that relate to, you know, how many of these have been used, or how much has been spent, and what that end result, or not end result, but property value, neighborhood impact has been?
Absolutely. We have, every project is tracked because they're all have federal requirements or state, city requirements for tracking all that, and I didn't include that, but I can get all that information for every one of these programs and include that in a follow-up.
Thank you.
One of the things, though, is anecdotally, especially some of the Healthy Neighborhood funding, people haven't taken advantage of, to be quite honest with you. Some of it's awareness. We also suspect, based on our colleagues in Green Bay, who we talk to regularly, and Mark on our planning staff was with Green Bay, so he is very familiar with these programs, and these numbers may not be enough to trigger people's interest, and we just have to be honest about that. And so, while we'll get you the numbers, the numbers are not going to be, they're not going to jump off the chart at you and say, wow, we've, we've had an impact. When we've, when they've been used, they've had an impact, but they haven't been used a lot, and that could be one of the reasons that these aren't moving forward as, as well as we would like to. And I know, Darren, you deal with this on a daily basis.
Sure, the, the CDBG is something that we've been using for a number of years. We've had CDBG since 1976, so we have, we have a pretty good program reaction. We have, we have a lot of people applying for those. The Healthy Neighborhood stuff is a relatively new program. It's not well-known yet, so we don't have a lot of, we haven't had a lot of, a lot of customers yet, but we are seeing an uptake in the amount of people who are using it. We're getting more people who are interested in sold-on Oshkosh programs and some of the rehab programs. So we're getting more interest. We're hoping, we're hoping to do about $200,000 a year of programming, and we're budgeting for it, we're just not there yet. And that's because, you know, people aren't aware of the program. We do talk to real estate companies. When people come, when people come into the office, we'll tell them about the programs. We have them on our website. People know about them, but not enough people know about those programs yet.
So I guess, a question, I'm sorry, meant to push the button there. So when, when we talk about the real estate companies, for example, you say when they come into the office, but do, do we regularly or at all reach out to let Realtors know in the community about some of these things?
Yes, periodically. Periodically, we'll go out to some of the, the real estate firms and do a presentation. I know we've been down to First Weber a few times and talked to them about those programs. I can't recall the last, it's not on a regular schedule, but we do reach out to them, and we do, we do, I think we need to go out more. We were going to follow with some of the banks, that they have a kind of rotating schedule that go, that go into some of the companies. We need to get out more often to them.
We also include notices to the neighborhood associations and the...
That's a good one, too.
Oshkosh Healthy Neighborhood Alliance. We talk about programs regularly with all them, since they're in touch with the neighborhoods, and a lot of them are in our areas that we want to make those investments.
That's correct. And we are getting more contacts from real estate agents requesting our programs. One of the issues with some of the programming is we are getting requests from, for, for programs in areas where we don't actually, where they weren't qualified. So they are looking at houses that didn't qualify or weren't in that particular area. So we always are, we're always looking at where are all these contacts coming, and do we need to expand the reach of that, of that programming? I think we're looking at that as well, and we're also relying heavily on that map, on the quality-of-life map here, to figure out, are some of those programs that we have, like the Sold on Oshkosh and some of the rehabilitation programs, if we want to take some change in these areas and turn these over to yellow, what do we need to do from an investment standpoint? Do we need to up the amount of money that we have for Sold on Oshkosh into some of these red blocks? Do we need to, you know, come up with some other creative financing terms? Because right now, we make you make quarterly payments. Do we have to maybe do something like we do with the CDBG program and back-end that when they sell the property? So, things like that.
A couple of comments. I know in the past, there were some of the banks that had financial incentives to convert a home back into a single-family. I don't know if the, if the banks still do that. I think we're going to have to look at a larger figure than the 5,000. I think as far as achieving our goal to get neighborhoods back to more single-family, that is probably the quickest way to get these homes that have been converted from, you know, the homes where we almost all grew up, and, you know, three rooms down, three rooms up, you throw a sink and a bedroom upstairs, you got a two-family. I think that's maybe the rap, the fastest way to get these neighborhoods back to single-family neighborhoods, and probably the most cost-efficient. So, but I think we have to look at more than 5,000. I know there are some cities that also offer these programs to city employees, type of thing, also comes to mind, but I think we have to look at the higher figure.
Just as a comparison, for a higher figure, I think Green Bay is up to about $20,000 or $30,000 for a new single-family house in their target areas.
I think their conversion program's at $10,000 a unit.
Councilmember Ugraror.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No, I got to echo your comments and, and staff's as well. I'm optimistic with the Rock the Block program for next year, as well as into the future with the three-year program that they're, they're hoping to do. It really would be nice to incorporate every single one of these opportunities into those blocks and really, literally rock that block, because that's how you're going to have an impact, and I think we know that. We just got to get it done, we've got to do it.
I appreciate that, and with the Rock the Block, they actually will have staff, and that, we're hoping, we're going to originate some loans from that program, because the Rock the Block, you know, they're, they're looking at a lot of the curb appeal activities as they go through it, landscaping and exterior repairs, and we're hoping that our, the heavy contact that staff is going to have with that neighborhood is going to result in us being able to generate some other loans, so hopefully, we'll get some of those, some of those dollars out into those neighborhoods, just via that contact.
That's good to hear. No, and to the, the dollar values, there are some low-dollar values, where they're not compelling enough to, to go through the hoops that it requires to get it, and there should be, there should be a process. It shouldn't just be given out, of course, but it's good to at least hear that you're considering changing that up, or at least bringing some suggestions to us to, to take advantage of, because without some sort of incentive in some of these neighborhoods, it's not going to get better on their own, unfortunately.
Councilmember Peck.
Thank you. It's all well and good to have all of these incentives, but the issue I'm hearing is the funding for the incentives, is that correct?
For the one piece that includes acquiring a blighted property, demolishing it, and then giving an incentive to a contractor or someone else to rebuild a new single-family house, we really don't have funding for that. And I think, in some cases, that's what would make the biggest impact in the neighborhood is tear down blight and put up a new house that meets all the building codes, and it has the great finishes and architectural standards that we'd expect. It's almost like a mini arena where you take the worst property, like Buckstaff, tear it down, and put one of the greatest-looking buildings in the neighborhood up.
And wouldn't something like that then kind of serve as a soft incentive to homeowners next to that property to basically, you know, kind of up the bar on their resident?
Yes.
I mean, I think we see the same thing happen when we go and we build, reconstruct the street. We see a lot of improvements, just anecdotally, we see people improving their houses on that block because the, because the, because the street's been improved. So I think you're going to have the same thing. If we've had a blighted property in the neighborhood, all of a sudden, a nice $125,000, $150,000 home gets on that lot, we think it's going to help that, that neighborhood in general. There'll be an area of impact. We're watching in Middle Village, we're hoping that, that happens with some of the houses, the new house that's been built in, in that particular area, to see if that happens. So, we're hoping.
Because I mean, the city can do so much, but the residents also need it. It is a true partnership.
Correct.
Thank you.
Councilmember Ugraror.
Sorry, and just one last thing. You mentioned it right there, the, there are case studies that, that support that argument right there, that when cities invest in the roads and improve neighborhoods just that way alone, it's the linchpin, it's that catalyst to get the rest of the neighborhood back into order, and then start the improvements from there. But a comprehensive plan, using that data, I know we're, we're trying to use it with the Rental Housing Advisory Board, some of the data and some of the metrics in there, whether it's police, code compliance, a fully comprehensive program, pulling on all aspects, can really improve a neighborhood, and I'd like to see that. It's tough, but we can actually have some impact in some of these neighborhoods that we all know where they are. We can, we can all say the same street names, but it's time to actually start taking some action and develop a comprehensive plan that really can identify and attack some of those problems.
I think, I think you're correct, and remember, the comprehensive plan, comprehensive plan's up at this level. When we're, we're talking at the neighborhood block level, that's a more intense, and that's a strategic plan, and what that map over there, that is going to help us get to that area. I mean, we are going to, we will be able to use this map to work on some of those program and decisions. You see these red and orange areas. Now, what we can start doing is overlaying other factors on these maps, age of housing, stories of, you know, we, we have hundreds of data layers that we can now place over these, place over these areas to start getting at some of the things that you're talking about.
And I was going to say, there's also existing lots that are already in those orange and red areas, that with the right incentives, I think we could get people to build new houses even on vacant lots in those neighborhoods without us even having to acquire and demolish a blighted property.
I see, I think we also have to work closely with the school district. We saw what happened with Oaklawn. When that school was built, there were five or six brand-new, $150,000-ish homes built before they even broke ground for Oaklawn. So it, it has a tremendous impact on the neighborhood, I think we've got to get the school district involved in this whole program, too.
Darren has a couple more maps that I think would help shed some light, because these are great, this is the feedback we were hoping to get, so we really appreciate it. We might be able to connect some dots. We're certainly happy to answer questions, but we do have a little more presentation to go, but if there are more questions, please feel free to ask staff.
Just a couple more maps that'll shed light on, you know, kind of the, the housing piece, and, you know, this, what we're... And, you know, this, what I'm going to be showing you now is, you know, have we planned for housing? Do we have the ability to grow housing in this community and develop housing? And this is the first start. If you pull up this map, it's the City of Oshkosh Comprehensive Plan Update 2040 Land Use. It's the one that has all the colors on it. And what this is simply showing is, are we planning, do, you know, it shows the area that we have residential development planned. It's either planned or existing in the community. And what you'll see is, if you look at the City of Oshkosh itself, between single-family and multiple-family, we're upwards of 40% of the land areas is taken up in residential development. On this particular map, what we've done is, in the old land use, in the 2005 Comprehensive Plan map, it was all yellow. Residential was all yellow. This time, as we went through the process, we created another category called medium and high-density residential because there was always this concern that when somebody came in to develop a property, that if it said yellow, right away, we were going to support multiple-family or we weren't going to support multiple-family. So we went through the process of actually creating those, the orange area that's on this map are showing areas that are either existing, existing multiple-family or planned for potentially medium or heavy-density residential. So that's just, this is kind of showing the inventory on the map. The next map, which is the same map, now, this particular map shows the growth areas of, shows the growth, and we're going to get to a map showing vacant lands in a minute. This map shows residential growth lands within our existing sewer service boundary areas. So areas where we can extend sewer service without having to amend the sewer service plan, this shows how much, where we can grow in this community. That heavy red line that you see, that's our sewer service area. Did Jeff run the calc on here? Yes, he did. So if you look at the light density residential in this sewer service area, that is approximately 1,400 acres. So there's 1,400 acres of growth in the growth area, in the sewer service area. Medium and high-density residential, that's about 216 acres. Any questions on that? Now, the fun map, and all maps are fun, right? This is the map that shows vacant residential land inventory as of August of 2018. So what this shows is lands that are within the city that are developable. And we've classified them as shovel-ready, yes, within zero to five years, or yes, five years out. That's the red stuff. The green is the stuff that we think that we could, you could come in and potentially pull a permit right away. Yellow, it's going to take a little bit longer because we have to extend sewer. And then red, we, it's, sewer's even further away. So if you look at this particular map, you see within the old city boundaries itself, that, you know, historic city, there are a number of lots. We have capacity in the center city to develop a number of lots. It's just a matter of a number of houses. It's just a matter of whether somebody's sitting on a lot, they don't know that they have a separate lot or whatever, but there is capacity to grow. So if you look on the map, it says shovel-ready. There's 461 parcels, which totals about 180 acres, and that would result in about 581 units. So there's approximately 581 units that you could come in and get development on that lot within the city boundaries, zero to five years. You're sitting up at about 954 units, and then in the long term, it's about 306 units. What we'd like to do potentially is, Green Bay has a program where they'll look at a bunch of vacant lots in an area, and they'll just send out a letter to the property owners to see if they're interested in selling their lot. That's something that we could explore if we want to find out if any of these lots internal are actually developable. The one thing that we haven't done, we haven't had time to do that, is analyze each and every one of these parcels to see what that status is, what the ownership is. Is there anything else? Is there anything else wrong with that land? We're simply pulling, we're pulling from our GIS layers that show us a parcel that's vacant. Jeff has done a good job. There was, there used to be a lot more green on it, but we carved out some of the wetland areas and things like that, or environmental areas that weren't actually developable, but they were zone residential. So any questions on that particular map? I know at the 11 by 17, it's a little bit harder to read, so if you all want something like this, we can get you the bigger maps.
One of the things the staff was, you know, preparing for this presentation, the two maps that are up there before you right now, you know, for the folks at home, they can't appreciate the number of green dots that are in the central city area, that are in areas that, on the other map, show the greatest need and the greatest concern. If you mesh those two together, that may be where you want to target some of your funds and maybe up the ante for those areas. If you go to the target areas where we already have some empty lots available, we'll make it, we'll do our best to make it worth your while to consider building single-family in that area. And, you know, you got to squint a little, even with the map you have, but you can see there's a good smattering of green, which is basically shovel-ready parcels that could be built today, but the incentives need to be there. And so that's, as we looked at that, that might be, it's more of a private sector approach, but giving enough incentives that somebody says, I'm willing to take a chance on doing something like that because the benefit we're offering might be worth it. So that's kind of the dots we were connecting as we were going through and preparing for this.
Deputy Mayor Palmary, you had a question before?
Two things. Number one, Mayor, I agree with you. I believe that this could be put potentially into the discussion with the school district because I've personally seen the closure of Lincoln School have an impact on potential neighborhood of choice because of the lack of a school. Now, we also need to kind of, you know, be informed as to what other potential school closures may be because that can have an impact. So I agree with the mayor on that collaborative discussion. The other piece is, Darren and I, we did have a discussion about the greatest need map and the selection of the geography for the Rock the Block and those other types of style of events and rehabbing. And I think that for the folks watching and for the benefit of other council members, maybe you want to help explain how that first one was selected even outside that greatest need area on the priority for, I believe it's delayed till next spring. It was supposed to be this fall.
Till next April. Well, first of all, we got to take a step back. Rock the Block is a Habitat trademark. So Habitat is, you know, they're the one, it's their program. We're collaborating with them on that. I think the reason that they wanted to choose the Sacred Heart, Sacred Heart neighborhood, correct? Was it was a new neighborhood association, kind of, you know, on the south side that we were trying, and it was going to be, I think that's one that's not in the, let me take a look at the map quick. It was one of those areas where we think we could, it was an early project where we could actually have more bang for our buck and learn more about the Rock the Block and how to potentially modify it going forward. That was just a, it was the place that we wanted to start because it wasn't one of these, one of these areas that are in red at this point because we need to get some experience under our belt to kind of fine-tune ourselves before we go into some of these areas that are more challenging. So we thought we could be immediately, I think we thought we could be immediately successful with Rock the Block in that neighborhood and build, and build kind of that energy and excitement and allow us to get some experience under our belt. Alan?
And one subtlety to the Habitat program is they use a lot of volunteers, and my understanding is they like to work on one-story homes because they don't like to put volunteers up on ladders and up on roofs. So that kind of steers them towards certain neighborhoods as well, or at least structures. And there's enough of those in Sacred Heart.
Yeah, that was an important consideration right now for them as well, just like Alan said, is because of the structure. So next time we go into something, we're going to have to consider that and figure out how we deal with that. Because as we get into the center city, a lot of that is two-story, so we're going to have to figure that out. But we need to get some experience under our belt first to really deal with that.
Well, and I guess then I would caution, then, you know, putting too much emphasis on the potential benefits of that type of event until we have more known, if we're looking at that as a pilot. So I can appreciate that strategy of trying it out in a less perhaps needy area for practice. But if we're looking at weighting the policy towards that style of rehab, I think we have to have more information, like you're saying, before we put all our eggs in that basket.
I think, I mean, when you look at it, I think they feel that they're, they feel that they can, Habitat has analyzed, they've looked at, they've gotten to the neighborhood, they feel that they can have an impact on that neighborhood. So I think that's why they wanted to start there. We still haven't figured out, how many projects are we going to generate? How are our programs going to be used? So we haven't figured out how we're going to mesh with them and how many projects we're going to generate. So I think, I think it's, I personally think it's a good starting point. They still have the goal of doing, how many, do they want to do it? Two a year, I believe, for the next three years.
Yes, I think there's still five neighborhoods.
Yeah, so I think, yeah, I think we're just going to build, we need to get some experience and then we can build from that.
Just one comment to expand on Deputy Mayor Palmary's comment about Lincoln School. Years ago, there was Lincoln School, Dale School, St. Peters, and Campus School, all serving that area. They're no longer there, and I think that might have been the beginning of the decline of what we're referring to as Middle Village, but a bit broader interpretation of Middle Village. So we do have to work closely with the schools on this, the school district.
Any more questions, Mr. Mayor? Or any thoughts on how we move forward on this? This is, we weren't sure how long this presentation was going to take. That's why we didn't want to do it at a pre-council meeting workshop, and this was a lighter agenda, so we wanted to take advantage of that. We're certainly here for any questions or additional follow-up. In keeping with our other presentations, workshops, I'd like to follow up in a month with some ideas. If there's any thoughts above and beyond what you've already stated, please let us know because we'd like to come back with some specific recommendations. And as, again, as we were presenting or preparing for tonight, more dots got connected for us, and I think we can make some suggestions to council to move this forward. And then as we finish the work that you've asked us to do relative to my goal, I think we'll be able to bring this together a little more.
Does that sound like a fair plan?
Thank you, Mayor.
Ms. Davis, Ms. Parrish.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have citizen statements to council. Pam, is anyone registered to speak?
No one is registered.
With that, we'll move on to the consent agenda. And this, the consent agenda are those items of routine administrative nature that are voted on by the council in a single roll call vote. Staff recommends approval of all items. Any member of the public or common council may request that an item be removed from the consent agenda for discussion. Pam, is anyone registered?
No one is registered.
I'll bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Councilmember Moogarauer.
Yes, can we, why don't we just, I'd like to poll 474. And then I just have a big question regarding 476 for, I don't know who wants to take 476, the...
That'll be the city attorney. You want to pull it?
I think Mr. Robbie might have maybe some background on 18476, the necessity to acquire property over on the Keenest Property. If you could give us a little background, give the people at home a little background as to what we're doing there and why we're doing it.
Yes, excuse me. This project, over the past several years, we've been doing monitoring. These are two former quarry sites that were used as landfills. One in particular was used for municipal solid waste. As municipal solid waste decomposes, it generates methane, which can pose a health and safety hazard, not only to the adjacent properties, but to others. In this particular area, Quarry Park just to the north and also the Knapp Street Quarry just to the west, have gone through similar situations of having landfill gas mitigation systems installed to extract the methane as it generates from the ground and vent it out to the air so that it does not have an opportunity to migrate through the ground and potentially into other structures. For those that have been in the city for a while, you may recall there was a property on Knapp Street that did explode due to methane buildup from one of the quarry/landfills that currently does have an active system. That was kind of part of the impetus of, you know, kind of looking at these things a little bit closer and trying to identify locations. So this is a location that, we have been doing some monitoring there. We started with a neighborhood informational campaign a couple of years ago in which all of the adjacent properties were offered methane detectors to be installed by the fire department as well as doing some testing. We've had our environmental consultant monitoring. The monitoring was on a monthly basis. We've established a background of data to show that methane is being generated in these, in this landfill, former quarry, to the point where it does pose a risk. And so we are looking at acquiring five parcels, well, four full parcels, a portion of another one, and there's three existing structures on those parcels. We would then demolish those structures and install an active methane extraction system similar to the sites across the street.
I have only one other question, really. I know we've gotten, there was some, the Keenest Property, we had an agreement with them, the keenest owners recently, and then I do see notes in here as well as, we've got funds in the capital improvement program. What city funds are being used for this project?
General obligation money.
Do we have a dollar amount?
We don't have a final construction estimate yet. We are working on finalizing the plans, but at this time, it is our belief that the funding that is requested in the 2019 CAP should be the last series of money to complete not only the acquisitions, but the construction project.
Roughly about 2.2 million, I think, when all put together.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, did you wish to pull 18474?
I do want to pull 474, yes.
Deputy Mayor Palmary.
Thank you, Mayor. Regarding Resolution 18470, just wanted to ask a clarifying question of Chief Smith regarding the special assessment, I'm sorry. We have here a resolution which actually combines two different budget amendments. One is to the Special Assessment Fund for $50,000, and then the other is the Police Special Fund. We identify in that resolution that this relates to costs, but you and I talked about this as almost, it seems to be a little bit more of an accounting cleanup because of some grant monies that come in, some funds that come in, maybe outside the regular budgeting schedule. Could you just clarify that?
Sure, sure. Essentially, it truly is an accounting, an accounting function as the city moved to the new municipal system in order for us to actually take advantage of any grants or any donations that may come our way. We're now, we're now required to budget the revenue before we can actually expend the funds for any expenses that may come as a result of needs that any particular department may have. In our case, this is just expanding our revenue budget for grants and for particular donations that we've received over this year.
Thank you.
And I do have one question from Mr. Moogar, which is Resolution 18-475. What exactly is going on with the...
This is a requirement of the grant. We need to have approval, a resolution from the council to actually apply for a grant. We were successful working with the Planning Division to get, I believe, a $25,000 grant this year to assist with some plantings in neighborhood areas. And so Bill Sturm and some of our staff are again working to enhance our tree planting program throughout the city.
Okay, great. Thank you. I see no one else that has a question, so would you please take, we have a motion in a second. Would you please take the roll? Less Resolution.
474.
474.
Crowsey.
Aye.
Taff.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Palmary.
Aye.
Moogarauer.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Carrie Seven.
Back to Resolution, which has been pulled, Resolution 18474. We need a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Councilmember Moogarauer.
Yes, I'll wait for Mr. Robbie to get there. My questions derive from, we've gotten, this is amendment number two to this contract, starting back in 2016. And I know it's a small amount, but small amounts add up, and this one's adding up to a nearly 50% increase in the cost of the contract from the original amount of 80,000. in the cost of the contract from the original amount of, of 80,000 roughly to 120,000. And we see a change, we see another change, and I know several other council members have concerns about some of the service agreements and the, the professional services we receive from the likes of AECom and several others. What's the, what's the purpose behind this one, and where, where does the increase come in this one, and why wasn't included in the previous ones? What was new that wasn't, wasn't identified previously?
In this particular case, it comes down to having a final schedule from the contractor on when they're going to get to certain task items. When we prepare a construction services agreement, we're generally estimating what the schedule's going to be based on, you know, the information that we put in the construction documents. However, until we have a contractor under contract and they prepare a schedule, that gets reviewed in accordance with the contract documents. We really don't know what their schedule is or how much effort's going to be needed in certain locations, so we have to do some estimating. In this particular case, you know, based on their scheduling and their means and methods, they had decided to do a couple of things during colder weather than we had originally anticipated, which required some additional work and documentation in order to make sure that the work that they were performing was being done in accordance with the contract documents, and making sure that we got the final product that we really need for the long term, so it holds up for us.
And when, when a contractor changes things, or creates a situation where we have to incur additional costs from our, in this case, AECom, are there remedies that we get to use?
If the cause...
If there's analysis, or if there's...
Yeah, if, if the cause is outside of the originally defined contract with the contractor, then there are remedies. You know, we've spoken a few times about a couple of projects, you know, the Snell West Pump Station, and the South Park Project in particular, where, you know, contractor took longer than they needed to. So, you know, a remedy is liquidated damages, you know, based on the, a number of days that they've gone beyond. So, in some cases, yes, there are remedies to recover costs. In other cases, if the contractor is still within, you know, the prescribed items within the contract, then there usually isn't a, a means to, to recover some of that.
All right, that's all, thank you.
I see no further questions. Would you please take the roll?
Crowsey.
Aye.
Pack.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Pellmary.
Aye.
Muggerhour.
No.
Cummings.
Aye.
Carried six one.
There are no, and is removed from the consent agenda. We'll move on to pending ordinances. The first is ordinance 18-479, designate Clerval Road as the Through Street at its intersection with Compass Way, so the Compass Way stops at the intersection. Pam, is anyone registered?
No one is registered.
Bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Would you please take the roll?
Crowsey.
Aye.
Pack.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Pellmary.
Aye.
Muggerhour.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Carried seven.
Next is ordinance 18-480, approve zone changes from suburban mixed-use SMU to suburban mixed-use district with planned development overlay, SMU-PD for property located at 1159 North Kohler Street. The Plan Commission recommends approval. Anyone registered to speak to this?
No one is registered.
I'll bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Deputy Mayor Pellmary.
Thank you, Mayor. Just, if we could have the map up on the screen, perhaps?
There it's, all right, it's up.
Okay, that's not the map that I'm looking at in the packet, but perhaps someone could point that out on the map, because the map that was in our packet didn't really show it. 480, North Kohler, 1159 North Kohler.
This is the one...
PG 89.
That's it.
Are you talking their site plan?
That one right there, that's PG 89, of the packet.
Also discussion, 18488.
I guess my question is, it talks about the need, or that because this would essentially have four front yards, Mr. Bridge, is that kind of the issue here, and that's why we need to go PD?
That's correct.
Because they need to be able to request base standard modification?
That's correct. If you look at, if you look at, it does have Keller's frontage, it's got Highway 41 frontage, it's got Oshkosh Avenue frontage, so it's, it's ringed on all sides by front yard requirements, or street yard requirements, I should say.
And do we have a sense of what they are planning to do there?
You're proving, well, you're, there's a, they're playing, putting a bank, a bank on the site. It is actually, the specific implementation plan is going to be, is item 23, Resolution 18488.
There's two items for this decision.
Yep, okay, all right, that's why we've got a little difference in maps.
But the PD is relevant, the PD is relevant for the question about the setback.
If there's no further questions needed, would you please take the roll?
Crowsey.
Aye.
Pack.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Pellmary.
Aye.
Muggerhour.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Carried seven.
Next is ordinance 18-481, adopt ordinance to regulate murals. Has anyone signed up?
No one is registered.
Bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Discussion. Darren, would you like to tell us a bit about this ordinance? You've been wanting to do this for a long time, and it's finally coming to pass.
Well, it's been on the ordinance for a couple of years now. When we readopted zoning ordinance, we actually had this on the books. It was part of the zoning ordinance, that when we did the zoning ordinance update, we pulled it out of zoning because we didn't want it to be confused with what signage is. So, we've been working diligently to try and replace the ordinance in, in the municipal code. And what we did is, we looked at the old ordinance, streamlined it a bit, removed some of the requirements in it, to make it a smaller ordinance, and I think we've expanded the actual reach of this ordinance. We've actually allowed it to be in a larger array of districts. We can now put it in the urban, institutional, urban industrial, heavy industrial, neighborhood mixed-use, suburban mixed-use, central mixed-use, urban mixed-use, and riverfront mixed, riverfront mixed-use districts, and also on government structures and institutional structures through conditional use permit. So, we looked at our experience with the existing mural ordinance, where we really confined it to the downtown area, and we really haven't had any issues with murals. So, we looked at it and said, okay, why don't we, why don't we try expanding the reach of it, and to try and promote more murals in the community.
Deputy Mayor Pellmary.
Thanks, Mayor. I just have one question. This may be for Lynn. On item F in the proposed code, we're talking about prohibited mural types, subsection four, murals containing any gang affiliation symbols. I trust you guys already went through this pretty thoroughly, but I guess my question is, are we in need of any further distinction between the difference of a tagging symbol versus what is like graffiti-style art? Is that in need of any further detail, or is it sufficient to just say gang affiliation symbols?
At this point, that was the best that we could come up with. It's because of the changes with the Supreme Court decision in the signs case, we are, took a really hard look at this and had to make some judgment calls. No one has gone up yet with, you know, their new ordinances, and we're actually ahead of the game redoing ours. A lot of other cities haven't redone their ordinances yet, which, which they will need to do. So, at this point, we wanted to include something in there. We thought it gave us something to work with. At some point, you know, we may come back to you with an adjustment. This was our, our best drafting, or best guess, I don't want to call it a guess, but our best effort at this time going forward. We're, we're aware of the issues, and we're watching what other people do, and, you know, whether there are better things that come out that we can steal from other places as well, so.
I would also add that graffiti-style art is different than gang symbols. So, that's, the ordinance is, is meant to keep, you know, think of a gang symbol that's out there, you know. We're trying to keep that. If somebody's tagging a wall with a gang symbol, that's not a mural. Somebody brings to us graffiti-style art, we're going to review that, and as long as it's not, you know, you're not advertising for a gang, it's going to be okay. We, you know, we've seen graffiti-style art, and, you know, it has its proper place. So, the ordinance is not intended to prevent that.
The gang-style stuff tends to go back more to the, the distinction back in the old case law of the, the fighting words and, you know, incendiary kind of, of words to, and they enjoy less protection under the First Amendment.
The murals I've seen in different parts of the state and the country, there is a real very good taste, but the approval, explain the approval, the approval process that we'll be doing or using in Oshkosh, to ensure that we don't have these sort of things happening.
Well, the approval process, we, we have actually streamlined the approval process, where there, there used to be a waiting period. Now, as long as you're, you're bringing, as long as you meet the standards of this ordinance, we will, we're going to issue you, issue you a mural permit. We, we had the, we, we had a conscious effort to want to promote and streamline the process here, so we developed an ordinance that we think protects both, you know, protects the public if it needs protection, and also allows these, the murals to, to get out in the community quicker. So, you come in, you get a permit, you meet the, you meet the requirements of the permit, we're going to issue, we're going to issue you that mural permit. We also have a process in there. If, if they come in with something that's a prohibited mural type, or, you know, we feel it's a prohibited mural type, or it's not meeting some other standards of the ordinance, we built in an appeal process, that, that appeal process, we, we involve the Public Arts and Beautification Committee, we, it can go to the public's arts and, public arts, Communication Committee, Committee.
There's just one.
Sorry, I get a lot of, I'm saying a lot of words, for, for review of that appeal.
Deputy Mayor Pellmary.
Just a quick follow-up question, then. Under section D, sub four, under those application requirements, I noted that we're requiring a colored drawing of the proposed mural. Is that pretty standard, and if so, what is the purpose of that? I mean, if it's not censoring, is, what is the motivation behind the colored proposed mural?
And maybe, maybe we don't, I mean, typically what we've seen in the past is, when a mural goes up, somebody has gone to the point of creating, of creating a design for that. I actually have the Oshkosh mural that was hanging, that was on Spar's building down in my office. But you're right, the, the color drawing, it used...
I think part of it may relate to the non-interference with, like, traffic.
Oh, yeah, correct, correct, yeah. Because we do have, we do have that provision there about not, not wanting to have conflict with, with any...
With other signage, and like, traffic signs and symbols. Depending on where it is, and, you know, how it's colored and stuff, it could create a situation where it makes it confusing, or you kind of lose a, a traffic sign or symbol in it, or it looks like a traffic sign or symbol, so that having the color just helps on that, so.
I mean, if, if it's, if it's creating a problem like we do, we'll, we'll evaluate it, and if we think it's creating too much of a, a problem, we could always, we could always amend it.
Thank you for that clarification.
I see no one else wishing to speak. Would you please take the roll?
Crowsey.
Aye.
Pack.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Pellmary.
Aye.
Muggerhour.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Carried seven.
We now have three, or four, and new ordinances, three of which we will not be taking a vote on tonight. The first is, which we will vote on, is ordinance 18-482, approve closure of Ninth Street Road in Prince West, West Ninth Avenue from Linden Oaks Drive to the proposed Paul's Place. The staff does recommend waiving the rules and adopting on first reading. Pam, is anyone registered to speak?
No one is registered.
Bring it back to the council.
Would this be the point where we make the, just put the motion on the table, or that we move to waive?
Move to waive.
All right, then I would move to waive the rules to adopt on first, first reading.
Second.
Any discussion? Please take the roll.
Crowsey.
Aye.
Pack.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Pellmary.
Aye.
Muggerhour.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye. So, I'll read it again. Ordinance 18-482, approve closure of Ninth Street Road in Prince West Ninth Avenue from Linden Oaks Drive to the proposed Paul's Place. Again, no one is registered to speak. Would you, any motion in a second?
I'd move for approval of 18482.
Discussion.
Second.
Would you please take the roll?
Crowsey.
Aye.
Pack.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Pellmary.
Aye.
Muggerhour.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Carried seven.
Next is ordinance 18-483, adopt ordinance to regulate the operation of commercial quadrecycles in Prince Pedal Pubs. We will not be voting on this evening. Did anyone register to speak to this?
No one is registered.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Pellmary.
Just one question regarding this. I know we're not taking action on it, but it's just kind of, something in my memory says that when we were first talking about this idea, that it would likely be only during daylight hours, and I just noticed that there was a limitation of 10:00 AM to 10:30 PM, which would be most of the time after dark. Did I not recall that correctly, that this was intended to be during daylight hours, the pedal pubs?
Yeah, I don't recall us talking that, along those terms. Sorry if there was a misunderstanding, but I don't, yeah, I recall that.
No, I don't either.
Seems no one else recalls anything.
Bureau only, but no one.
I think the only thing that came up was when I was talking about some of the cities in which I've seen them in, they operate, it seems like, you know, till dusk.
Mm-hmm.
But there wasn't any other conversation about that from staff.
So, I guess, you know, my question would be why we would extend it beyond that, if that's the common practice, but...
I'm aware that they're both before and after. Shutting it down at 10:30, I think that's where staff will take a look at the specific location for a licensee and determine what, what route would be appropriate, because obviously, when you get into residential areas after dark, so the situation's a lot different.
Especially in winter. Councilmember Crowsey.
Could we collect the data on the cities, and I don't know how many cities in Wisconsin have these bicycle contraptions, and figure out the times that they have, so we can have the data?
Takes a lot of work of staff time, you have to contact homey cities.
Just to comment on that quickly, we can get you the times, but I do know, and we did review many other cities' ordinances in putting this together, and many do go into the evening hours. State statute allows you to go until 10:30 PM, which we mimicked our ordinance after. We can provide for an earlier time, but again, many ordinances were going 10:00 PM, 10:30 PM.
Okay, next we have ordinance 18-484, council, change council meeting date from November 13th to November 14, 2018, which is a Wednesday. Did anyone register?
No one is registered.
Bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
On second reading.
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry. Ordinance 18-485, cancel December 25th, 2018 council meeting. New resolutions, Resolutions 18-486, award bid for public works contract number 18-14 to Vinton Construction Company for Oshkosh Avenue Area Redevelopment Infrastructure Improvement, Improvements. Pam?
No one is registered.
Bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. I do have one, Mr., one question, Mr. Robbie. It is my understanding, this is, this is coming in under budget?
Yes, this particular project is coming in under budget, although there are some other items to be bid out...
other items to be bid out later that are also part of the budget, namely the Riverwalk along the lake shore and also the recommended improvements at Keller Street and Oshkosh Avenue with the development of the right turn lane and the modifications to the roundabout. So there are some other projects that will be utilizing the budget, but at this point in time, you know, we are very pleased with the results that we got from this bid.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions or discussion? Would you please take the roll?
Crowsey.
Aye.
Pack.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Palmary.
Aye.
Mugerower.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Carried seven.
Next Resolution eighteen dash four eight seven, approve Rouge Park Master Plan in Prince Advisory Park Board and Plan Commission recommend approval. Any one register?
No one is registered.
Bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
So move.
Second.
And discussion. Deputy Mayor Palmary.
Mr. Maurer.
Yes.
So a couple of questions. It looks like we have in our packets here, the Rouge Park Master Plan that Rettler Corporation did. One of my questions is, there were a number of public participation meetings that took place. I didn't see a summary or any of the information or feedback, but it did indicate there were some thirty-odd folks that participated. Aside from the Polco survey, I guess I would be interested in knowing, you know, what a summary of the public participation was, since I was not able to attend those.
Sure. Yes, we had a number of public input meetings held at Carl Trager Elementary School, as I listed in my memo. Number of those residents live within the Sawyer Creek Neighborhood Association, so many of those attendees were from the neighborhood association. I would say anywhere, depending on the evening, twenty-five to thirty, thirty-five participants. We had meetings on February fourteenth, March twenty-second, and April twenty-fifth. Those were specific for the neighborhood in that area. And then we also had it for discussion at the June Advisory Parks Board meeting and then in July, the Parks Board took action recommending the plan to the Plan Commission. Plan Commission meeting on August twenty-first, then they recommended approval as well. And it's, it's a little, I guess, generally summarized in the document. I would say the, the biggest areas of discussion, this is a, it's more of a natural conservancy park. It's not your typical playgrounds, athletic fields because of the preservation along the green space, basically. So we're looking at trail extensions to the west when future development takes place. That was the primary request of the residents, make sure there's additional trails and going through the wetland areas and so forth and connecting further to the west. And then also another connection to the north across the creek, so that residents further on the northwest side of the creek can also access down into the Trager School area. There were two, I would say, points of contention throughout the neighborhood meetings. Those would be the discussion of possible outdoor exercise equipment located along the trail and then the addition of downward facing lights. We did use the Polco survey to, to discuss those two items, once we figured out that was really the areas of concentration of the neighborhood. We found that it was about fifty-fifty of those responding to the survey. That information wasn't include, was included in the final concept plan. I believe there are about two hundred and seventy-five respondents, if I recall correctly. Two hundred and ninety-six responses and it was about fifty-fifty, those in favor or against the outdoor equipment. So when that came to the Parks Board, the Parks Board decided that this maybe wasn't the best site and just decided not to have that equipment there. And then as far as the downward lighting, more of a security lighting on the trail, we had about seventy-six percent in favor of some lighting. When it came to the Parks Board, there was some residents that spoke opposed to the lighting as well as for the lighting. And in a discussion with the Parks Board, it was ultimately decided to add additional lights to get people not only behind Carl Trager School where we had initially planned to light it, but getting them back out into the Rouge, Rouge Field area. It's less lit there, so the Parks Board actually asked for additional lighting to be included in some of those areas. So those were the real three items, basically, that were top priority. But then the, the Parks Board did, I think it was unanimous recommendation as well as the Plan Commission to approve the document.
So just as a follow-up question then, two pieces, and that is, with those trail connections, was there a discussion about incorporating? Because if I understand it right, some of the trails have been placed that are already existing for the purpose of school routes, right? So I guess maybe you could just talk a little bit about how this helps us accomplish some of the goals related to save routes to schools and then follow up with how we plan to pay for maintenance of mowing and this size and security and that kind of thing.
Sure. When this park was developed back in the late nineties, I believe, during, late nineties, early two thousand, I believe it's in the document as well. The, there was discussion between the city and the school district. Because of the subdivision, the Rouge Field subdivision, it was decided that the school district would help with the development of this trail system to get the students across the creek. So this was their access to the school, Carl Trager, and then they would not need the busting for that subdivision. So at that time, there was discussion of some shared maintenance with the school district and the school district does, at this time, does some snow removal on the trail to assist with the students getting to Carl Trager. And then our staff does some as well in some of the smaller areas that the school district doesn't have equipment. As we move further to the west, I would expect we'll be asking the school district again in some of those paved areas. But as we move further to the west, that we don't really see a lot of paved areas because it's going to be wetland areas where it's going to be more boardwalks and natural trails. So as far as the maintenance goes, it's, it's going to be limited because it's going to be, again, boardwalks and more of natural areas going through those, those systems. But what we'll typically do, what we've done out at, at this site is we'll do about two passes with our mower on each side of the trail to keep the encroachment about twelve feet away from the trail. And then every couple of years, we hope to go in and remove some of the invases of oil.
And then how would, and maybe you couldn't answer this, but I'm sure these discussions took place, how are we looking at in terms of, I guess, policing and things like that as, as another one of our city parks?
We actually had the police department involved with many of our meetings. They provided great input for some crime prevention and that's where a lot of the discussion on the lighting focused. We talked about the need for low-growth shrubbery and the police department is out there monitoring quite often. The neighborhood officer was involved at, at times throughout this discussion as well, as well as Kate Mann, some of the, the crime prevention options. But that's where the lighting came from. If they're able to drive into Carl Trager and the trails are at least lit into the hours where it's after, after dark, obviously, that the lighting would assist them.
Thank you.
Sure.
I see no other lights on, so would you please take the roll?
Crowsey.
Aye.
Pack.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Palmary.
Aye.
Mugerower.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Carried seven.
Resolution eighteen dash four eight eight, approve specific implementation plan for development. May bank at eleven fifty-nine North Kohler Street. Plan Commission recommends approval. Has anyone registered to speak to this?
No one is registered.
Bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. I do have one question of the applicant. You could come forward, please. That, that particular piece of land, there's a lot of very old, large oak trees there. We've seen a lot of large trees being taken down along Oshkosh Avenue. What are your plans to maintain the trees on that piece of land?
So there's a handful of the trees that are actually pretty deteriorated and actually dead, so a lot of those will come down. There are two, though, that I know are in good shape. Unfortunately, they run right where we need to connect to some sewer and water-related access, so we do hope to use the wood in some way or another and/or to get it to someone who, who needs the wood for burning purposes, so heating homes and things. But we, we're, it's on my mind, it's on me's mind, so.
So your plan is to clear, clear cut the area?
We're going to have to, I think, yes, unfortunately.
For the clerk's benefit, can we get your name and address?
Sure. Megan Casper, thirty twenty-four Holly Court.
If there are no other questions, would you please take the roll?
Crowsey.
Aye.
Pack.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Palmary.
Aye.
Mugerower.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Carried seven.
Resolution eighteen dash four eight nine, grant noise variance request Kelly's Bar, two nineteen Wisconsin Street for amplified music until midnight at Beer Garden September fourteenth and fifteenth twenty eighteen. Did anyone register?
No one is registered.
Bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Deputy Mayor Palmary.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is the same application that we get regularly, require, requesting extension of our amplified music code. And thank you for the detail staff put into this. It appears that once again, the applicant has not really demonstrated a true hardship that's unique according to the criteria or the considerations that we look at. Once again, the explanation is, well, you know, that's when the students tend to go out later or whatever, but we have that ordinance and for two nights in a row, we're going to extend it another hour. Again, I don't see where the applicant has truly demonstrated a hardship for the purpose or that would be any different than any other business or operation, so I won't be supporting this.
Is there any other discussion? Would you please take the roll?
Crowsey.
Aye.
Pack.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Palmary.
No.
Mugerower.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Carried six one.
Next we have council discussion, direction to city manager and future agenda items. There's only one on, one on here, which is a future budget workshop on September nineteenth, beginning at five PM in room four oh four.
Yes, and one of the other items that staff talked to me about, it has to do with my goal that council gave me on industrial development. And I think staff's in a position where we'd like to do a workshop, are tentatively looking at October ninth and just wanted to see if that would work. Five o'clock, I'm guessing probably a forty-five minute presentation. We actually got the housing one in less than forty-five minutes, so we might be able to pull it off. But that's only part of the house, yes, true. So, you know, we could, I don't know how heavy or light that agenda's going to be at this time, so I'll just take your preference. Would you like to do it before the meeting or if this presentation at the beginning of the meeting?
That's the night of the open house at GOEDC, if you're aware of it.
Oh, is that, well, Jason should know that's a council night, so if you want to do it.
No, you're doing it on a Wednesday. You said October tenth, right?
No, ninth.
Oh, ninth.
Ninth, I thought you said.
Oh, okay. No, okay, that's.
All right.
I'd be surprised if Jason did that to us. Jason knows our meetings. So I'm not sure if you have a preference to do it prior to the meeting or in the meeting at the beginning. If you got a preference, happy to accommodate whatever.
Do it before the meeting.
Prior's fine.
I agree before.
Okay.
Council?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll shoot for like five o'clock. Thank you very much.
Mayor, just one comment on the budget workshop. I will not be at that meeting on the nineteenth. I'll attend the Plan Commission meeting on the eighteenth.
Okay, thank you. Next we have citizen statements to council. Pam, did anyone register?
No one is registered.
Then I won't bother to waste our time reading it. Next we have council member announcements and statements. I see nothing on here from any of the council members, so we'll move on to Mr. Rooff. Any of your announcements and statements?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple amendments in your agenda packet. One is for some closeout environmental work that was associated with the Marion Road Water Tower Site. Mr. Robbie's here in case you have any questions regarding that. Also another one with our agreement with Brown and Caldwell for support, some stormwater support related to TIF thirty-four and TIF thirty-five, reviewing those plans. Oshkosh Corporation update is in your agenda packet. Mr. Davis is here in case you have any questions on that, but things appear to be going well and with the award of the bid tonight, we'll be working diligently on getting that all scheduled. Generally, the idea is to get Westfield done this year and then Keller done next year and then the ponds essentially as they can. Weather permitting, they'll, they'll knock that out, but the idea is that right now OshCorp is using Keller in that temporary road that they built. Once Westfield gets done, they'll use Westfield, then we'll get Keller done, so the trucks will have ongoing access to there. So that seems, we're, we're very hopeful about that. And then just as an aside, I'm going to be absent from the next council meeting. I'm going to be at the International City County Management Association Conference. I've been asked to speak at a session with Polco about citizen engagement and some of the things we've done. Polco's actually been talking about some of the things we've been applying. A couple of questions came up tonight regarding Rouge Park and just some other things that we've been doing and so we're going to be highlighting that at the conference and I'll be getting my thirty-five-year certificate of membership in the association. So, yeah, I've been at this for a while. So I'll be absent, I'll be doing the presentation actually about the time the conference is, or the council meeting is going on. That's all we have.
Just very quick, quickly back to OshKosh Corp. I drove past today and there's some still going up, which is visible from OshKosh Avenue. So they're moving along it, I think the weather's been, the last week, very cooperative. Deputy Mayor, you'd like to make a motion to go into closed session?
I would. So I will move to go into closed session. Council may convene into closed session to discuss development agreement with Fox Valley Pro Basketball, Inc. and property located at twelve twelve South Main Street. One pursuant to Section nineteen point eight five one G of the Wisconsin State Statutes to confer with legal counsel who will give legal advice concerning strategy to be adopted and two pursuant to Section nineteen eighty-five one E to discuss bargaining options, strategy and parameters where competitive bargaining reasons require a closed session.
Second.
Before we go to a vote, Deputy, I'm sorry, Councilmember Allison Osby?
Thank you, Mayor.
Like to say something?
Due to conflict of interest in my employer being involved, I of course will not be participating in either closed session.
Okay, thank you. Would you please take a roll?
Crowsey.
Aye.
Pack.